Good evening. I'm Tom Jacobs and Chairperson of the Bennington Select Board. I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting of the Bennington Board of Selectors. It is now six o'clock on May 11th. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce my colleagues, Donald Campbell to my far left, Michael Keane.
Good evening.
John McFadden. Jim Carroll.
Evening.
Justin Corkman. And Town Manager Stuart Hurd. And our Recording Secretary Linda Vermees, who does an excellent job, by the way. Before we start, could we all rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with this hope that every day shall justice be served.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda. And the consent agenda is something that we have basically part of our responsibilities to deal with. The first item would be the minutes of the last board meeting of April 27th, 2015. Could I entertain a motion if there is one?
Move to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? If not, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are passed. The warrants have been circulated for signature. These have come to us as part of the board packet. You've all had the opportunity to review them. If there are any questions, please raise them. But I will also entertain a motion for the passage of the warrants. Donald Campbell moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim Carroll. Thank you, Jim. All in favor of the warrants as presented?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We have a number of liquor license applications. I think there was were a couple. There's one omission. Could you share that one, Stuart?
Yes, this one came in late today. It's for the Cumberland Farms operation because they are transferring their license from one location to the next. Liquor Control has asked them to submit an application. So I have for you the first class renewals of Brown Cow Cafe and Cumberland Farms.
And what was the first one again?
Brown Cow Cafe.
Right.
And there shouldn't be any more after this. They have to be in by May 1st, so these are running just a wee bit late.
Our signatures on the application request will signify our consent. Then we'll move right to a proclamation that has been proposed by the Emergency Medical Services, which is the Bennington Rescue Squad. John, would you care to read that for consideration?
Sure. Absolutely. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Bennington, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as Emergency Medical Services Week, dated at Bennington, Vermont, the 11th day of May, 2015.
Thanks, John. Our signatures on that proclamation will indicate that we are in favor of it, but if anyone would like to speak specifically to the proclamation, feel free to do. Otherwise, I'll circulate or John will circulate the proclamation. Hearing none. And again, this is a service that is so critically important to our communities that it does bear the importance of our board responding and indicating this proclamation. So we will join in its signature. Thank you. This is a time in the meeting, as we start the business portion of it, to entertain citizens' comment. And again, I would ask that the citizens keep their comments brief, and if there are other matters that need to be attended to, we will talk about it at a future time in an agenda fashion. But this is an opportunity for citizens to share their observations relative to community activity or needs. But it's really not a time when it's an action item, and so please take that into consideration as you share your comments, so we can move on to other business. And if you do want to speak, just go up, introduce yourself, and share your comments with the board. And I think I have, Mr. Westcott.
Hello, my name's Loyal Westcott. I'm from Bennington. Today I got two more complaints about Pleasant Street.
Speak into the mic a little bit.
I got two more complaints about Pleasant Street. The one guy leaves his home just to get away from it. It's hardcore drugs that are being sold on that street. And he got arrested for assaulting one of the drug dealers. And I told him he can't be doing that, but the thing is, now he leaves his house so he can get away from the hardcore drug problem that's on Pleasant Street. He mentioned the brother and sister duel that is renting to these type people. And it's putting everybody on that street in danger, including our law enforcement. I just was looking to see how you come out with the last two ordinance that I had mentioned at last meeting, because Mr. Stuart said he was going to call Burlington about the one thing.
I didn't get a chance to do that.
Yeah, because, I mean, this guy's leaving his home now because it's so bad.
Those are, you know, good comments. If you have you hear or noticed those things, report them to.
Oh, I do.
Report them to the police.
I do.
Ask them to take steps. This is not something that we, as a board, can fashion a response to that type of thing.
Well, like I mentioned about making on paper high-lease president and stuff.
That's entirely a policy or an ordinance that would have to be considered with all the ramifications to it. Stuart will examine that, but we have to have Town Council enter his comments too, because.
Right.
That's not something that is easily passed. You really might have to change the entire process of licensing and all of those types of things.
Right.
And we recognize that neighborhood as being of concern, but I think that the landlord and landlords on that area have their responsibility. And hopefully, they're going to be recognized that, and if they don't, then there'll be other steps that are taken. But right now, that's all this board can do. And we appreciate your reason concerned, because they're the same of the folks that live in that neighborhood.
Yeah, because we don't need street vigilantes going out there either, like Baltimore had.
Right.
I don't want to see that happen either.
No, that's right. We appreciate that. But I don't equate Bennington to Baltimore in any context.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm Chris Bates. I've been in Bennington now for three years. Some of you may know me from Outdoor Secrets Unwrapped. I do a very popular TV show, radio show, everything. The thing I'm talking about today is the trailhead on North Branch Street. I live directly next door to it on Branch Street. And over the weekend, we had 31 cars. I counted between the two days, 31 cars. Part of them parked in our parking lot, part of them parked on the street. And I understand that we didn't get the grant for this parking lot. So my question to the board is, what are we going to do? That's all I have to say, is what are we going to do about that? Because I don't have a problem exploiting any of those things whatsoever. So if, you know, if the Town of Bennington continues to ignore this problem, we will exploit it. So that's all I have to say.
Just a second. Maybe if you could just, if any of the board have questions that they would like to ask.
Fine.
Phil, free Donald.
I'm really good with the microphone, so.
You are.
Okay.
So I have a pretty good sense of what the answer is here, but how did the parking work over the weekend?
It was parked in front of our house, past our driveway, down in front of our fence. And you can only get, normally what they do is they park, they try to park if you're there early, they'll park in a nice row. But some people like to park vertically, so you only can get maybe four cars up that little driveway. So then they come to our house, they knock on our door, and they say, hey, can we park in your parking lot? And it's like, uh, okay. So that's my issue, is that every weekend, we have cars from Connecticut, from New Jersey, from New York, from Massachusetts. And even this week, we had one from Illinois.
But they seem to know where to go, or are they kind of wandering around looking for the trailhead?
No, they know right where to go. They absolutely, they have a book. They even show me, and, you know, they say, hey, this is where we're at, right? And it's like, well, yeah, you're right here. So it's in a book.
Chris, would you explain what the trailhead is?
I can't hear you.
Would you explain what the trailhead is for those who may not be familiar with it?
It is on North Branch Street where you can access the long trail. So it goes up on Branch Street, up to the White Rocks, Bald Mountain, and then you can attach to the long trail, which goes to Maine, all the way to Atlanta, Georgia.
Stu or Dan, would you guys be able to address the parking lot that we were proposing at one point?
I was going to, once you finish, let you know the current status.
Okay.
So it's, I think it's an important issue that, you know, I don't mind if people want to park in our lot, as long as they come and ask us, and it's fine, but, you know, we only have room for maybe 15 cars. And over Mother's Day weekend, we had 31 cars between the two days. And I was like, holy crap, you know? So.
People coming in and out sort of politely, driving carefully, or?
Very politely. They're all really good. They even ask us, you know, where can we go eat dinner? Where can we go get stuff? I mean, it's a constant throughout the summer over there. So I think it's something that Bennington should really look into for whatever reason they're looking into it, but we need parking first.
Justin?
No, no, I don't have anything to say.
We talk about economic development. You know, this is not the major economic spearhead, but it is the, you know, where the trail starts. And I understand this is only one of the few places in the state of Vermont where the town is actually on the trailhead.
Actually, one of the few places in the country.
Okay.
Is Bennington, Vermont, for this trailhead to get to hook up into the long trail. So it's, you know, it's a big deal. It truly is a big deal.
Because when I hear all these out-of-state cars, I'm like, where are they spending their money?
All out-of-state. Very seldom do I ever see Vermont plates parked over there or in our lot.
Okay, great. I know this is not part of the agenda, so I really don't want to get into it.
No, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
But maybe, are we going to have a quick?
I just, yeah.
Okay.
First one I'd say, because it's impossible that that many people use the trailhead.
Yeah, I would agree that we, as a town, have a responsibility to make sure that we make that a comfortable place for folks. You will recall that there was a grant application put in with the Green Mountain Club. Unfortunately, that did not come to fruition. However, we do have the plans, and I've asked our Highway Superintendent to give us an estimate of what our out-of-pocket costs would be to install that planned parking improvement, because we do have the expertise and the equipment to install the parking. We just would have to consider what our out-of-pocket costs would be. And I can bring that back to the board, and you folks can decide whether or not that's something you'd like to proceed with.
I'd like to, like, the next meeting, that give you enough time?
We can certainly have that. RJ'd hope to have it today, but other things, springtime, you know, gets busy.
Yep.
One of the opportunities is we could work with the Green Mountain Club, because they were going to have a match for that grant anyways, so perhaps we could.
We could invite them, just invite them to that meeting.
Help us out with the materials. And again, it'd be up to you folks what you, how you want to proceed, but that is an option.
Okay, thanks.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Other folks I'd be interested. Michael.
Oh, sure.
Is this one on, question? This one on? Hello, hello? It's on, it's on. I just want to thank the board for letting me do the summertime music on the porch at the Town Hall. Stu came up with a name, so I think that Stu deserves that. We're going to do it through June, July, August, and then have some kind of finale in September, maybe at Oak Castle. I talked to Eric Peterson. We're not going to pay the bands, I'm not going to raise any money, because that's too much work. And I think everybody's been tapped out as far as charity goes. But what we're going to do for the bands is Cat TV will let them show their wares and perform on Cat TV, which they can do anyway. And also WBTN is going to play their CDs on throughout the summer, if, you know, they have a CD. So I just want to thank you guys for letting me do it. And I also want to compliment the board on the last meeting and what you're doing now, the way you're setting things up. I think it's more uniform for the citizens to have time, but if it's an agenda item, you bring it back and talk about it in depth, so things get done. And I just want to compliment you guys, and congratulations, Don Campbell.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
James?
When is that going to be?
Starting, we're going to try to do it weather permitting, starting every Saturday, from about 6:00 to 8:00, 8:30, depending on the band and whatever, at the porch. And people can bring their lawn chairs, their kids, they can dance in the parking lot.
Is there any calendar, Mike? Might there be a calendar of the bands that are playing somewhere online?
We're working on it. I thought I'd have it by today, but I don't. We haven't got them all.
But eventually, there'll be some.
My number, you know, is in the book, and they can call me. We might have some kind of a website or somebody's page, you know, Facebook. Maybe Jimmy would do it on his. Just.
You could do that. All of us, all of us could share it on our individual.
Again, it's going to be weather permitting. If it's going to be, if you look outside, and it's going to storm, we're probably not going to be able to do it.
That's a good idea, Mike, though. Each and every one of us could share the schedule on a weekly basis.
Because I think music downtown is important. It's going to be on a Saturday night, so it won't interfere with the BBC's doing on there Fridays, the first Fridays, and.
Just get the word out.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joanne Aron House from the Bennington Area Chamber of Commerce. First, I want to thank Loyal for being such a good citizen and keeping an eye on the safety of our streets and the enormous toll that has been taken on the time and energy of our police department. And thank you for responding in a very considerate way. Also, I want to thank Mike for the Saturday, Saturday Music on the Porch system. I will be posting that in my column every week, and as soon as we get schedules, I'll update the schedule so that people who maybe don't get on Facebook or whatever can read about it and learn about those Saturday night special music events. The reason I'm here for the chamber is because I want to remind the people here in Bennington, our nonprofit organizations, that this summer, starting now, because the weather is good, call the Welcome Center at 447-2456, and book a weekend day where you can set up your booth to offer traveler amenities and take donations. It's a great opportunity for our local nonprofits to raise a little extra cash with very little effort and get their word of what the good things they do for our community out to the general public. That's it.
Thanks, Joanne. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, is that Chris?
Can I shut that off?
Please.
Hello, I think I've met most of you. Stephen LaFave, Bennington.
Steve, doctor.
I'm also an emergency physician and chairman of the Board of Bennington Rescue, so I just wanted to be here and thank you guys for the resolution. I think we're very lucky to have such a high-quality EMS service located in our town. And certainly, as physicians, we're very thankful to have them, and they do a very good job.
I just wanted to act of the same. My name's Bill Kamart. I'm the brand-new Director of Operations. I've been here all four months now, and I really appreciate the level of commitment this community has to Bennington Rescue, and likewise, the commitment of our dedicated professionals to the community. And I really wanted to thank you guys for the proclamation for EMS Week next week.
Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
For your services. The proclamation is just a small measure of our appreciation, and anything that this board and community can do to support your efforts, you should feel that you have an open door. And enjoy your.
Thank you very much, and sorry for the noise from the back row.
Now, we like the next generation. Yes, anytime. Thank you. Other members of the community. Good. If not, we will move out of the citizens' portion and go into the other business portion of our agenda. The last meeting, I had shared a draft of rules of procedure that the board might consider adopting relative to business decorum and the like. Since that time, I haven't received any criticism, suggestions, edits, or otherwise. And I know it's not as good as, it's the, have no response. One of the things that I do want to raise, and it's a serious part of the rules, is that I'm concerned enough to suggest to the board that we have discussion and not tonight relative to use of the social media that's available to us for board business activity. We really should be very sensitive to the fact that we are, each one of us, representatives of the community that elected us, and we should not be using the social media for the purpose of stating, sharing town business, or other activity. And I say that in the context of the board, but really should be a policy for all committees and commissions of this town. Social media is a great way to share, like Jim was saying earlier, about the activities of the community, but it should not be used by our appointees or elected members as a forum for town business. And I'm a lawyer, so I'm sensitive enough to the fact that we all have First Amendment rights, and I certainly don't want to do anything that would discourage that. But I think this is a serious enough issue for us to address going forward, and I'll propose some language that I'll share with the board and Town Council, I guess, to see if Mr. Wilmington feels that it fits the bill. So I welcome your comment, even at this meeting, without giving you any heads-up on it, but hopefully, it won't be something that would be seen as so critical as to interfere with your rights as a citizen, because you're a citizen first and a Select Board member second, but you do represent the entire town, and that's why I think that's an important issue. Any thoughts, Justin?
No, not at this time.
I have some thoughts about it. I've been, I was chastised about a year, two years ago.
You can speak up.
I was chastised by our then-chairman, Joe Krosick, because I made a, an offhanded and funny remark about having a parade in town. And, you know, I was being facetious, but some took it seriously. Nevertheless, the fact remains that Facebook and other social media, media remain a force of good, good things that can be done, and it also can be a place where people can express their opinions. I liken it in many respects to the public houses that I knew, or the pubs that I knew in England, where people came and expressed their political opinions about things, and I think that that, we should be mindful of that. There are very few opportunities where people in this town have a forum where they can speak their mind. There is the paper, you know, letters to the editor, but Facebook and other places are an important place where people feel comfortable expressing their opinions. Now, be that as it may, I'm not saying that we conduct, or that I should conduct in any way the town's business on Facebook, and I believe that I haven't. Nevertheless, it should be a place where people can express their opinions to those of us who are their elected leaders in this town, and we should listen to them.
I have some comments. Yeah, Tom, I'd be, I think I'd be very interested to see what you have to write. You know, I think the devil's in the details on this kind of thing, and probably, it's a very nuanced thing, but I, I'm sure, Jim, that we'd agree that it's probably really important not to trample on anybody's First Amendment rights, but also, as a Select Board and as an elected official, you know, there might be a different, slightly different bar that we would hold ourselves to.
I agree.
And I think that probably, where that bar is, is what is going to be most interesting. So we may have to actually see some language to know how it resonates for us. And I appreciate that. Michael?
Let me see it, let me feel it, let me read it, then I'll be happy.
I guess I'd like to see how, or what our legal counsel comes back with, because with this type of issue, I see the enforcement being the biggest struggle. I mean, at the end of the day, as selectmen, each one of us has a different group of citizens that we represent. And, you know, they might get information from me through a phone call, email, whatever it might be. Another selectman might do it through Facebook. It might be about town, town circumstances or goings-on, but I think that's appropriate for any selectman to do. Same time, every one of us has their own set of morals and justifications that they live by, and they may think that they did something right or wrong, and I think we all hold ourselves to what we believe is right and wrong. I don't look at this board and see anyone that has done anything wrong. Maybe I missed the thread. But at the end of the day, as selectmen, there's only one thing that we can actually get kicked out of our seat for, and I think that's embezzlement of funds. I don't think there's really anything else that we can do as voted-in citizens to have to be forced out of our position. And so enforcement of something like this doesn't seem possible.
I think the response to that will be, if there is something that the board feels was inappropriate, that the board should not feel that it is stuck with that, and it should individually or as a group, bring that to the attention of the entire board. What I would like to do with this effort is to limit the possibility of that happening. So as you suggest, our ability is, the function is determined by the board, the electors that say you're going to serve or not serve. So this board is not going to be kicking anyone off.
Right.
But I think it's going to be something that if there is something inappropriate that you, or I, or anyone else feels that has not been dealt with appropriately as a representative of our community, that that should be brought to the attention of the board. I don't think it's up to yours truly to check with social media and sheriff and monitor that activity. That's not what this would be. But we all, as a board, need to be sensitive to the benefits and also the challenges of social media as a means of communicating. And it's a great tool, but it can be inappropriately used too. And we're fortunate that we haven't got into that situation, but we could, and I'm concerned about that. Yeah, the recent Vermont State Police thing that happened, they were very glad they had a policy in place. Now, we're not talking about, that was dismissal. And I don't think we'd be talking about dismissal here, but it seems like if you have something in place and we all agree to it, then we can have a, we can have a kind of moral agreement that we all try to uphold.
I would fear that using social media as the one platform to kind of go after might be inappropriate as well, because what we're talking about here is not just what we say and how we say it on one individual platform, it's how you conduct yourself in public as well. I mean, if I'm in, you know, in a situation that you guys don't feel is appropriate, well, that's for you to believe in. I can be in the situation that I want to believe in and within the groups that I want to believe in. You might not like, whatever the event is, we just had the Mother's Day event. I might go to that, and some of you might not like the event. And you might think, well, John, you shouldn't be at these types of events as a selectman, but that's my prerogative. And so if we're saying social media, you're allowed to express yourself a certain way, it is still your life. And I know we are selectmen, and I agree. I agree with you. And that's why I try to hold myself to what I believe is the correct, the standard that's appropriate, and I'll continue to do that, hopefully. And that's the way that I'm going to do it. Every other selectman that gets voted on here, I don't know how many we've had in the history of Bennington, but they all conduct themselves in different ways, and sometimes they put themselves in tough spots, but I don't know how you could have six other selectmen say, it's time for you to stop doing what you're doing, and have that be appropriate. And that's the only reason why I want to hear from the legal counsel before we even go forward in trying to draft something.
Yeah. I will share with Stuart, to share with Rob, to see if he has issues with it, maybe he can provide some guidance with that. Because I think the board does have a responsibility to set the bar very high, we individuals and as a collective board. And that's, I don't want to think that I'm trying to set that, that bar. I think it's all of us have to. So that's why it's got to be a discussion that we have in the future.
Yeah, let's see what it looks like. But let's not infringe on how people like to live their life outside of this circumstance.
But just have in mind, you're still a representative of the board as a town-elected official, so keep going to the Mudders Hall.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had on the rules, but I'll proceed with that, if that's okay. You're still receiving comments in the meantime from us if we have. Yes, yes, please, by all means. There's, I don't take any great degree of authorship. There's, I don't take any great degree of authorship, other than to share those with thoughts with you, and so that we can give something and leave something that when the next board steps up, they will have a reference point that maybe none of us had for. Moving to Economic Development Fund program, it's the second reading. We've got 15 minutes allocated, and I don't think I've taken too much of the opportunity from Michael to not share with the 15-minute reading.
I'm sorry, just, this is our first reading? Will we consider our first reading or second reading?
Second.
And we'll, we'll vote next time?
You can vote tonight if you'd like.
Okay.
Yep. So we, just for the people in the audience, probably for the past few months now, we've been discussing the idea of a Bennington Economic Development Fund, a fund that would be used for capital projects and large-scale economic development initiatives. Again, and I believe it was written accurately in the paper, that there was an old micro-loan program that was somewhat redundant and dormant at the time, that we've since canceled, and we're looking to reallocate those funds into this Economic Development Fund. I've met with each board member, either individually or in a small group, to get feedback on the, on the proposed program description, and at our last meeting, had our first reading. So this will be our second reading, and if the board so desires, they can vote on it this evening to implement the policy as it is.
The policy requires a, for the purposes of discussion, a motion. I'll entertain that.
I move to approve the establishment of this Economic Development Fund. I think it's a great idea, fully in support of it, and it's best practice around the country.
That's a motion?
A second one.
Okay. Got that, Linda? We have a second.
Excuse me, before you go on, does it come from decisions to talk about the agenda?
We've talked about it twice, Mike.
There's, there's no further citizen participation in this matter.
Can I just make one comment or ask one question of it?
No, you're out of it. No. Thank you, Mike. We have a second board discussion, please. I'll entertain that if there is.
The only discussion that I would have is that when we follow, if, if and when we do adopt this, we need to start talking seriously about implementing this, and we need to start seriously talking about implementing this and doing what we've all been talking about.
I expect that implementation is going to be immediate as far as the policy, but I do expect reports on at least a bi-monthly basis as to the activity, to find out if this is working. And if it's not working, we've got to revisit it early, because otherwise, this will fall into the same vein as the program that it's really replacing. And the proof is going to be in the pudding as to whether or not this has any economic benefit, and if it does, rate, and we'll add to it. If it doesn't, we'll revisit it.
Just to your comment, Jim, internally, we've had conversations already about some opportunities that we think this would be a good fit for, so I think you would see that happen relatively quickly.
Care to share those via email?
Not at this time.
Well, your tease.
I think during our last meeting and our last reading, one of the concerns, one of the main concerns was that we didn't have a good understanding of how much money was going to simulate what we want, and to make sure that we identify those goals. I think there was an action to kind of do some research to understand, does $50,000 give us what we're looking for, or does the benefit of contributing $100,000 significantly improve what we get out of that? So I agree with what we have in front of us, I just really think we need to focus in on understanding that before any ideas are circulating, even within the group as, as we speak, because we could throw it in the wrong direction without that information.
Sure. No, and I think, if I remember correctly, our conversation was that the Business Recruitment, Retention, and Expansing Group of the Bennington Economic Development Partners would talk about the most impactful way, as John was saying, but also come back with some recommendations on how to make it a sustainable program as well. So how do we feed, feed the program as well?
So I'd like to see this as a standing agenda item at least every other month, and giving you the opportunity for the first month, if sometime in August, you can just let us know how things are shaping up.
Sure, happy to.
But the motion's been made, is there any further discussion? I don't want to cut off the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, and the program is ready to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a amendment to Article 25, Bennington Water and Sewer Regulatory Code ordinance, second reading, again, last meeting, you outlined the changes, maybe you could just highlight them again, Stuart, while we have more.
Sure. This really is an amendment to the way that we can allow individuals or corporations to help us pay for capital improvements on the water and sewer systems, allowing them to become a part of their quarterly rate-paying system, which also gives us an opportunity, if they fail to pay, to move against them as a real estate tax proposition or delinquency. So this is, is something I think that's going to benefit the system, and it will benefit the people who are looking to us to help expand that system in, in the future.
Do you think it'll be a economic benefit or otherwise to the town to have that?
Well, I think it's a protection that we don't now have. If we make an agreement with an individual on the expansion of our system, and they agree to pay a certain amount, we have really two options. We can set it up as a mortgage payment, or we can set it up as part of the rate system. If it's part of the rate system, then it becomes an automatic lien on the property, and we haven't got to worry about the whole mortgage foreclosure action and everything else. We can move very quickly against them.
And that's the latter thing, latter part of the amendment, that it becomes an underlying lien, just like a real estate tax?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts, or I'll entertain a motion, since it is a second reading?
I move that we accept it as is.
Second, Dan. And second, from Jim, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I'll circulate that for signatures.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Justin. This is a time of the year where we, as the board, have the opportunity to appoint to our boards and commissions various citizens who have undertaken an interest to step forward and take on responsibility and involvement. We, there were circulated a, with our packet, a list of the boards and commissions for which appointments are appropriate. I welcome the board, as far as your feelings on the appointments to the board and boards and commissions with this meeting tonight. I'll defer to whatever the.
I move that we accept all of the candidates, with the exception of the contested positions, and move that we go and, and speak with the, those contested positions.
And that's only with the planning commission?
I believe it is, yes.
So the, that was the motion? Do I have a second?
Do you mean that we do a round of interviews with them and make our decision afterwards?
With the contested race, yes.
Okay.
Do I have a second for that specific purpose?
I'll second.
The motion's been made and seconded that the slate as presented in our packet, and we'll look at those just a second, are, are considered, and the board will vote on it tonight, with the exception of the planning commission, which has three candidates for two positions. And that's the rationale for the purpose of the motion, I expect. I'll entertain discussion on it.
The only discussion I'd like to, I actually, I'd like you, ask you a question, Donald. I know in the past, it's been important to me to meet these individuals personally, so I understood who they were, where they're coming from, regardless of being an incumbent or not. So I'd happily vote against this if you find it important to meet people that are not contested as well. Not to put you on the spot, but I know that I've, I've appreciated that in the past, it let me get to know them. I know it's a little.
I, I think I would say in the, thank you, that's a very thought, first of all. I think probably in the, in the name of expedience, I might, there's only one person on here that I, I might introduce myself to on my own, and spare either the time, that it would take the rest of the board to go through it, but thank you for that thought.
And let me say this, you know, I, this was not an attempt to jam this down the board's throat or the town in Bennington, but for most of these positions, they're incumbents, incumbents that, that you're well familiar with, and the rest of us are. Now, be that as it may, I did find it helpful, and this was an idea that both Justin Corcoran and Jason Morrissey brought up several years ago, that it was helpful to listen to the candidates who presented themselves. Now, be that as it may, we've heard from most of these people before, so.
I think it's, those are good points, because for new board members, not familiar with the participants, it's an invaluable benefit, because John and I got to meet quite a few folks that we didn't know, and it also encourages them and to come and share their view of what their position is, and whether or not they feel that they're being supported by the entire board. I was comfortable in getting this on the agenda to not have that discussion, but going to what John said, says, there's, there's just not a timeline we have to have tonight. I think we're dealing specifically with the planning commission as a separate issue, which will require, I think, our dialogue versus based on the motion if it's passed. But it's, it's not a bad practice, but I, and I defer to the, the select board as to how it wants to attend to it. Justin?
You know, I think it's been a good process in the past. I don't know how much we've gotten from it or not, but with, and with Jim suggesting this go around, it might go in that direction, so.
Okay.
I'd support that. The only, only other question I had was about the town service officer. There seemed to be some experience in the same exact field. I don't think it's necessarily a conflict of interest, but I could see it, see that view in some, some regard, and I just wanted to see if there's any discussion about that as well.
Could you consider amending your motion to allow the town service officer to come out of that group activity, so we could visit with the applicant?
Sure.
And see if.
We had stopped filling that position in the past, had we, because of the, seemed there wasn't a need for it.
Well, it was a combination of, a combination of no one interested in filling the position, as well as a feeling, in a sense, from previous service officers that there was not a need. I can tell you that the state of Vermont believes that there is a need, and they continue to, to push us to fill the position, so when this applicant came forward, I, I felt it appropriate to, to certainly fill the position if we had a candidate that was capable of doing it and understood the need.
No, my, my question, it really had nothing to do with who, who applied for it, just more the, the idea that I thought that, that position had, had gone on the wayside, and that Vermont 211 was handling most of those things at one point, that, that position had handled.
The state of Vermont, the state of Vermont does handle most of these things during, during normal business hours, and they actually have people on call on the weekend, but Vermont...
It's an unpaid position, it costs us nothing to fill.
That's right. I would like to see it filled.
I'd like to just say that, you know, at some point, when we vote on this, we're going to enumerate and announce who these candidates are, so would it be inappropriate for you, me, to mention who this person is?
Not yet, because I think we, it's really.
Because I think he's, all right. Well, I think this deserves some discussion, though.
Yep. Why don't we, if you could have ended your motion, maybe the second, to have the slate as presented considered, but withhold the planning commission applicants and the applicant for the Bennington.
Town service officer.
Town service officer.
So moved.
Okay.
Would you repeat that?
We're, really, you're asking. Yeah, and I've been asked, Linda, to basically, basically, the slate as presented tonight.
With the exception of the planning commission, the town service officer will be removed from the motion that I made.
Okay, and they will be interviewees.
Right.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So we have a motion, and all in favor of the motion as presented in.
I'll second the amendment.
I'm sorry, thank you. And if you would, Jim, identify those individuals that are in the.
Be more than happy to. For the, for the Development Review Board, two positions open, Charles Cop, incumbent, Barry Hurst, incumbent. For the Historic Preservation Commission, there are two positions open, so those interested should apply, we'd be glad to hear from you. For the Housing Authority, there is one position open and no applicants. For the Board of Listers, there is one incumbent with two open positions. The incumbent is Robert W. Eber. For Regional Commission, there is one position open, we'd be glad to hear from you. And as far as the contested position, don't mention that?
No.
Okay. So that's it.
All in favor of that slate as presented and discussed? Aye. Passed unanimously, and we will request the applicants for the planning commission and the, the health, safety officer.
Town service officer.
Town service officer. Keep giving, pretty soon we'll have a, there used to be one for town viewing, fence viewing. I don't think we're filling, are we? Town fence viewing.
We have received applications for the HBC, but they came in after the packet went out, so we didn't think it appropriate to try to force them on you, so they'll be on the next agenda, and we'll continue to put this before you.
Great, thanks very much for that effort. The next item on our agenda deals with the booth terrace quitclaim, or the, trying to resolve that deed issue. I think at the last meeting, Stuart was very helpful, along with a overhead topo map that Donald shared. It's pretty obvious that there are some issues relative to the use of that land. Would you care to just reiterate, Stuart, why we would.
Sure.
Could accommodate the individual?
In this particular case, there is a, an easement that was originally, when a subdivision was laid out at the, at the southerly end of Short Street, to provide a through-street so-called booth terrace that would have run through the, the middle and the rear of some of the properties that are located on Union and Fairview Terrace. In this particular case, and this affects the Gothiers' residence and the one adjacent to it, and I can't think of the property owner at the present time, but the easement was never dedicated to the town, so the town has, in a sense, no rights to the property by deed. However, because it's shown on some of the old maps as an easement, the Gothiers are asking that in order to, to clear the title of their lands, that the town step back, indicate that it really has no interest in the easement, even though none was ever given to us, in order to clear title and assign any rights that we may have had to the Gothiers.
Define easement, for those of us unfamiliar with that.
Well, generally, an easement is, is a set, land set aside, generally through a particular piece of property, that may be accessed by either those who join it, or in the case of a town easement, it may be accessed by the public. And in most of the cases in, in Bennington, the town has, where it has title to easements, they're either operated as a trail, which guarantees public easement and public rights, or they're a Class 1, 2, or 3 highway. In this particular case, there is no utility easement, that is, no municipal water and sewer run through the property, there's no surface easement, which would provide for transportation by the public across the property. We simply have no rights historically, even though it was intended at one time to be a town road. So in order to clear title, when you, if you read Mr. Gothier's deed, it encompasses the whole property, but there is the concern that because at one time it was intended to be a public right-of-way, that somehow the, the public would have access to that property. Those property owners who live in and around it, who have used the easement for purposes of accessing the rear of their properties, may continue to have rights to it, but that's really a, a real estate issue that is. really a real estate issue that is between the property owners and not, does not involve the town.
So the phrase quitclaim, as far as it applies to the town, is that the town quits any claim as an easement?
Perfect, perfectly said, yes.
Thank you. I'm smarter than I look.
Would you make a motion to that?
I move that we accept it as written.
Second.
Any further discussion on this process? Hearing none, all of... Yep, go ahead.
I own one in Allen.
Why don't you come and identify yourself? And feel free to share your thoughts on the matter.
My name is Alan DeVecchio. I own 111 Booth Terrace. I'm pretty much the one that really needs access. House to my east, and then Mr. Gothier's house to my west. It's the only way I can get into the lower end of my property, so I'm not, I don't hear real well, so I'm not really sure what you just said, so I just wanted to be sure to get up here and...
Sure, it's my understanding that the town is just saying the town has no claim to that easement. Whether or not other parties, yourself or others, have a right or interest in that property, we cannot identify or give you advice on that because you may have that.
But there's nothing permanent that's going to come out of this meeting, then?
Basically, the town is giving up any claim it has. Whether or not you have a right is certainly your prerogative to pursue.
Now, currently, there is no, there is no owner of that easement. Is that right?
The Gothiers own the property where the easement lies, and Mr. DeVecchio uses that easement to get to the back of his property. That is really between the property owners. Mr. DeVecchio may have prescriptive rights...
Right, and that would be in your mortgage or the deed?
Well, it may or may not be. It certainly is in the property adjoining him to the east. There is a statement in the deed about adjoining property owners having access through to the rear of the property.
And whose deed is that that you're referring to?
I don't recall the name.
Well, I think that...
This is, as I understand it, not giving legal advice?
Originally, when the, when the house was built, the road was the front of the house. The living room faces that road. Now Booth Terrace, when I moved in, I moved into Fairview Terrace. I live across the street. And during 911, they changed Fairview Terrace to Booth Terrace. So all the houses are called Booth Terrace now, but that house was always 111 Booth Terrace. And that was, that was the front of the house.
Would the town continuing to hold rights to this easement, does that grant public...
We don't have, under, the deed did not come to the town, so we have no rights. It may have been intended to, and in order to clear title, the Gothiers are seeking the town to quitclaim any interest it might have whatsoever. And for Mr. DeVecchio's protection, he, he needs to talk with his own attorney about whether or not his rights exist, and it's really not for us to determine that particular question.
We're not warranting, as the town, my understanding, we're just saying if we had some right...
Then this isn't where a decision will be made.
That's right, exactly. But it is worth saying that this is, this gets the town out of it. So the town is not going to bat for that right-of-way anymore.
Okay.
So this would be between you and your neighbor at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I get along fine with Larry Gothier, so it's not a big problem, but when I heard that this was happening, I was just concerned that somewhere down the road I wouldn't be able to, actually, that's one-third of my property down there, and that's the only way to get into it, really. It's a hill.
How long, how long have you been accessing that?
I'm sorry?
How long have you been using that?
I've been in Bennington since 92, but I bought the property in '04. I've been renovating it. Actually, I just started working down the hill.
Again, going back to what Stuart's saying, that you really should talk with your private attorney, your private attorney, just to make sure that your rights are identified and maintained, but it's not something the board can...
Well, this seemed like the first step to take is come here.
I, you know, I like to hear from folks like yourself, because it's interesting. So is there any further discussion on that private matter? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Everyone approves that motion. Thank you. We have the town manager's report.
Yes, I have only one action item for you tonight. We have coming up in August, August 1st, it's a Saturday, the Home Brewers Competition, which is being sponsored by the Bennington County Industrial Corporation, Madison Brewery, Catamont Glass, in conjunction with the newly so-called Four Corners North, which is County and North Streets. It will be a midday affair. They are seeking to have the portion of County Street from North Street to School Street, relatively small portion, closed from 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. I'll let the, them give you all of the PR that's necessary for the competition, but in fact, we must act to allow them to close the street, and they're aware of the responsibilities for security and other things, so...
Is the Bennington Potter's, which might be impacted by that?
They're very much in favor of it. They're all working together collaboratively.
When working with your staff, do they see any issues with this?
Pardon me?
When working with your staff, we're discussing this with your staff, have they seen any issues with this, with shutting the street down?
We haven't heard anything. All of the businesses along that area, there are only, I think, two residences, and including those that are on the opposite side of North Street, Hawkins House are all collaborating on this event. They're hoping to bring a lot of activity to that part of the neighborhood.
When is that again?
August 1st.
I think the board will be interested, not before August 1st, but to hear more about the Four Corners development and activity, and maybe we can have that as an agenda discussion at some point, because I think there's a lot of activity there that is presently under the radar, but it probably deserves to come up and get more information about what's, what's happening, what their plans are, and where it might have an impact on the economic development of the town. So we'll keep that on our, our scope for later on. Maybe Mike can remind me to do that. Is there anything else, Stuart?
Oh, I would need a motion, please.
So moved.
I'll look at that.
They're here, if there's no further discussion of the motion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes, and that will take place, and you'll let the public know about that.
Okay, and that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Other business, and I'll start with Justin.
I have nothing.
Jim?
Just one thing, a friend of mine contacted me through Facebook, mind you.
That's okay.
About her running on Chapel Road, and a resident of Chapel Road who has three pitbull boxer mixes who have repeatedly, as she runs along Chapel Road, come out charging her. And the resident has met with my friend and has bluntly told her, when, I take my friend at her word, when she's requested that, you know, the dogs be leased appropriately, as the law provides. And this particular individual has said, well, why don't you just stop running? Now, my friend, and I take, again, take her at her word, said that she has called the animal control office four times, left messages, and gotten no response.
Okay. Will you get back to, Jim?
Sure. We'll figure out who the owner of the dogs is, and we'll take appropriate action.
I'll let you know.
All right.
And you can do that pretty soon, so this lady doesn't lose her opportunity to run.
We're glad to do that.
Thanks. Jim, anything else?
That's it.
I do want to advise the community that this is work, that everybody can bike and walk to work and walk rather than put your car away for overnight. I did that. I rode to the meeting tonight. I want that to be on the record, Linda. And if I get out of here before dark, I'll be home safe, otherwise I'll call the police department for an escort. But it's a great way, there are a lot of activities going on. I think maybe the chamber, are you aware of the bicycle activity months, this month's, this? Is that in your, will that be in your letter?
Put it out in our list as guest ones.
You know, we don't expect everyone to ride their bikes to the select board meetings, but, you know, it is an opportunity to get out and enjoy and also, you know, get to work. One of the things that we see reported in the media is that bikeways and ways to get, to recreate and to work are important economic drivers. And if that's an example of me riding down the hill from Elm Street to here, it's fine, I'll just have to ride up the hill tonight and go home. But I think that's all I had, unless I come up with something, or John's talking about, what he wants to do. Go ahead, John.
I don't have much in terms of other business, just wanted to highlight a meeting that happened last week, I believe it was, between Michael Keane, Michael Harrington, Bill Colvin, and myself, looking at employer surveys and the questions that we might want to ask. It was the first meeting, so we didn't get into a lot of the details, but we ironed out the foundation of how it's going to be performed, who's going to own the survey, what we're trying to accomplish. I think the biggest highlight is that Bill has offered up his access to Survey Monkey, which will allow us to get the survey out to these employers at no additional charges, just the additional maintenance and administration work. So once we have more information on that, I'd be happy to share it with the board and the people, but as of right now, it's mostly just foundation work.
What's your time line? That sounds like a John question.
It is a John question. We're hoping to have it in place as soon as possible. Ideally, we have it at the end of June. We really want to make sure that when we're sending these surveys out, it's at the end of the year for businesses, so June and January, or December, so that they're looking at their budgets, their financials, and they're either very happy with us or very angry with us. In either case, we want to hear what they're planning for the future and how we can participate.
It's a great tool. That's really, whatever we, what we do, it's got to be employer-driven, not by the select board, but by our community, and that's going to be a great resource for us to see. And we expect to get compliments and also get responses to the words, but it's great that you're, you're taking that on.
I believe Michael Harrington might have something to add.
Just wanted to give you a heads up. So a rough draft went to Bill Colvin today, who's going to set up a very rough draft online. We'll get that back to the, to the team probably within the next couple of days. So compiling everybody's comments from the group, I think we've got a pretty good head start on it.
Thank you. Michael, you have a...
Yeah, I do want to acknowledge and recognize the chair for having taken his bicycle to work and the select board today.
I want to see the shorts. Do you have the shorts on?
He does.
I also want to... We have these skirts here, and I don't want to...
I want to remind the members of the select board that this Saturday in the town office, we will have our planned working session on our measurement system, the balanced score card. We're scheduled to start at 8:00. If it's easier for folks to start at 7:30 or 7:00 and finish by 9:00 or 9:30, that's okay with me. I'm early up.
What's, what are your feelings, Justin? Justin sounded like he's pretty flexible.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's fine. We'll make it work. It works.
Eight o'clock, eight works?
Which direction, 8 o'clock, either this?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
The earlier the better.
All right, and look for, look for some materials in your emails, probably on Wednesday. If you get a chance to read through some of them, not the 80-page one, of course, but if you get a chance to read through some of them before we begin on Saturday morning, that'll be fine. And I think this will probably take two working sessions for us to get a good lock on it before we present it to the public. That's it.
Yeah, and as if Saturday wasn't busy enough already. No, there, there are some great, for the outdoorsy among us, there's some great things going on. On Thursday night, Bennington College is doing what looks like it's going to be a fascinating presentation on ticks and Lyme disease and global warming, and it actually looks like it might be a really great presentation at 5:30 at the college. Always appreciated when they open their doors and welcome us to their program, so I thought I'd pass that along. And then on Saturday, after the select board early morning meeting...
Thank you.
At 10 o'clock, the One World Conservation Center and the Whipstock Hill Preservation Society are doing a hike up on Whipstock Hill that they're calling Birds, Trees, and Herbivores. And the fellow who's coming is Jim Andrews, who's one of the, really, one of the best wildlife biologists in the state. And so it's a, it's a great opportunity to get out and see some of the exciting stuff that's up on Whipstock Hill, if people are interested. And Michael, is there still going to be a float on Saturday afternoon?
As far as I'm standing, I don't know where, see how the conditions are on Wednesday, but I don't know if we are, if we're going to float.
Okay.
It's good, we'll go, it's too dry.
Okay, so if, yeah, if the water's not too low, that, at the town's new park, along Morgan Street, there's going to be that sort of christening run, and it's bring your own kayak, and there'll be an opportunity to try to get in the water and have a look around. But I guess the water's pretty low right now, Dan, so it might have to be put off until the water comes up.
It's slow because of the springs, but it's so dry, it's much lower.
Yeah, but first of many great opportunities, hopefully, to get out on that property. So that's it for me.
Great. Other matters, we have the opportunity to reconvene on Memorial Day, right?
Yes, or we can meet the previous, the Monday before Memorial Day.
What's your pleasure, or the Tuesday afterward? I guess maybe you don't have that flexibility, but what is your pleasure for...
Not Memorial Day.
I prefer to do the Monday previous, if possible.
That's great.
We would normally meet at the, at the conference room at the town offices, really just to do warrants and other business, make it a short meeting, but we are required to meet twice a month.
I'd like to, you know, have an agenda, unless somebody else says...
No, I, I'll agree with that.
Doesn't have to be heavy, but I'd like to have it productive.
If we're going to meet, let's do it. But is Tuesday not an option for you, the Tuesday following?
Tuesday's going to be tough, right? Just that, that week.
So which is the good one for you, Monday, the...
Be the 18th.
18th, yeah.
18th.
It's next Monday.
Oh, wow.
It's next Monday.
Monday, the 18th.
Yeah, that's, it's going to have to be that in this month.
So it's not going to be a heavy agenda? If we meet, I really like to have something that has a reason for all of us being there. So if we could, if you have agenda items, as, repeat this every time, what you'd like to see on the agenda, just drop me an email or a note, and I'll make sure that it gets there, because the, we normally meet for agenda planning on Tuesday mornings at 8:00. So if you can get things to us, feel free to do it, and it can always be added, but in order to get it out into the open meeting law compliance world, we do need to have that as an agenda as soon as possible. So the plan is now to meet on the 20, I'm sorry, the 18th?
18th.
At the town office?
We can, we can do it early at the town office at 5:30, if that works for people, and we'll, we'll have an agenda, put it together, and probably talk during the week to figure that out.
Sounds good. So that's when we can be. I think I need a, unless there's other business that the board would like to conduct, we would ask for a, or ask for a motion to go into executive session on personnel and contract matters?
So moved.
We are...
Second.
Okay, if you're okay, all in favor? Aye. We are now going into executive session after a slight recess.